Thank you for your time.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence for your question. That's good, thank you, have a seat.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to put on for the discussion topics on the ten notes. Do I have a second to put that on the agenda?
What was it? Sorry.
Just I'm making a motion to put the ten note under the discussions tab.
Okay, sorry, I'm good. No one else did I second?
I'm doing that thing, that's not on the point, rather than on emergency, we don't put it on.
If, that's why you have to vote before anything happens, to put it on, so I'm asking.
What's the emergency for the ten?
That's what I'm saying, I thought it was only an emergency to put something on.
No, anything that can come up can be voted on before any official action is taken by council. We have a very important question.
No, I don't.
So I'm asking for the ten notes to be put on under a discussion topic where no voting will happen, you know, just be talking about that. This is, I don't think we talked about the ten note, we just forgot to put it on the agenda. Okay.
There has to be a vote, Josh.
Okay.
The, there's a motion and a second.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
No, I, I'm not trying to. But, yeah, you guys, the council has to vote. If the council agrees, it can all be discussed tonight. If the council doesn't agree, it doesn't really have to be an emergency, it's just the council expects us to only agree if it is, you know what I mean?
All right, Chris seconded.
Carla, please.
Yes.
Right there.
Uh, no.
Reese.
Yes.
Burches.
No.
Eisner.
No. Okay, moving on, we don't need a ten note, folks.
No, hold on.
All right, roll call, please.
No, hold on.
No, roll call.
Okay.
Carla.
Here.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Here.
Burches.
Here.
Eisner.
All right, an executive session was held prior to this meeting on November ninth to discuss personnel matters. Are there any public comments on agenda items only at this time?
No. All right.
Make the motion to approve the minutes of October twelve, twenty twenty, October twenty six, twenty twenty, and the minutes of the fire department, police department, treasurer, engineer, code office, and health department, and finally commission for the service. Seven.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Burches.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Carla.
Yes.
Uh, Steve Bowers?
Here. Good evening, thank you for having us. I'm Steve Bowers, I'm with the Penn Valley Airport Authority. I'm the airport manager. And, and I'm here to reacquaint the city council with the airport, I understand anyone who aren't that familiar with it. And also talk about the possibility of any support from the city in some area. So, there's not that many slides, I'll try to do as quick as possible. But, so we are the Penn Valley Airport Authority and we're the administrators of the Penn Valley Airport. The authority has been around since nineteen forty-six. And it spans a little over that time, which you can imagine. I also came around in nineteen forty-six, I haven't changed much, but, yeah. So, the airport is, has nine municipal entities that are the owners. And I apologize to the person in the black box who probably just can't see that much. But, but the, the airport has nine municipal owners that are listed. Snyder County, Monroe Township, over Pen Township, Silversgrove, Shamookin, Salisbury, Northumberland, and Union County. The administration is that each owner, which Sumberry is one, owns one share of stock. And, and each owner has a representative on the airport or instruction. You, I apologize, I have trouble talking through this now. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. It seems to get stuck. And of course, Cleveland Purdy is the representative for Sumberry at this time. Penn Valley Airport, you, if you don't know much about it, it's really pretty unique in that it is one of fourteen, only fourteen, advanced category public use airports in Pennsylvania. So that puts us up, up the ladder. We're right under the controlled field airports like Harrisburg, Williamsport State College. And, and as such, we are entitled to operate in more federal funding and chartering. So, yeah, so we're one of fourteen in the state, we generate about four hundred thousand dollars in economic activity. We have about eighty-one hundred business visitors a year, that's a primary focus of the airport. And, and our goal, one of our goals is to meet, you know, we provide an airport that is attractive to business development. And we meet all of those, or those criteria. So we have a mission, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but basically the airport is a property manager, much like the city council is, or much of the state. Uh, you know, we take care of all the regulatory requirements, the development of what's called the federally approved airport master plan. We acquire funding and ensure there's some oversight of the commercial ventures that may operate out of their airport facility. And, you know, as I said just earlier, we promote economic growth, that's a key, keystone requirement of what we do. The graphic you see here, this is our controlled airspace. Uh, that we're responsible for managing and ensuring that it stays free of obstructions. So we offer a number of services at the airport, you know, we, there's company doing aircraft restoration, there's maintenance, what we call line service, shielding visiting aircraft. Uh, there's, there's flight school, our personnel work out of the air class, a number of independent flight instructors. And we've succeeded over the past fifty-some years, that is seventy-five years, excuse me. But, yeah, we sourced about eleven million dollars in federal funding. Uh, and we've expanded a number of services that I know, I don't know how legible they all are. Uh, and, but in the photo you'll see our most recent, which is, we are now a, a base for Flight One, which is, so they are based at the airport and are there twenty-four seven.
What's the largest aircraft that the airport can land?
Uh, the, the airport is fat as for all of these projects to what's called a citation sovereign. So, yeah, that means a whole lot to you, but, but if you've ever seen the wise markets jet, it would be about two sizes larger than that one.
So it's a corporate, a corporate jet with how many passengers?
That depends on some figures, but, you know, maybe twelve to fourteen. Uh, there are some smaller jets that are configured that when National Beef lands, they usually unload, you know, about ten burly beef cutters and off they go to the plant, and they return them that's, that evening. They're in the morning, back out to Nebraska in the evening.
Are there any, does WISE's close order airplane?
They do.
Yes. Is there any other corporate in that that's there?
About, there's thirty-eight based aircraft. And about half of them are business-related aircraft. Some are physicians that use aircraft for what they do. Uh, they, they're, there's Wise Markets, there's Ritz Craft, a couple of the largest, and then, you know, a myriad of smaller companies. Uh, Surplus Outlet flies a lot, has one of the larger aircraft at the airport. Uh, of course, you know, Geisinger. And made us a little black helicopter here, and they're not based there, but they're there every day. Uh, almost every day, that's Heberfield, and Heberfield is a company that does PGNL's line maintenance. They hang upside down outside of that thing and change light bulbs and towers. They have openings. But, uh, so, really, truly, the, the recreational activity, you know, there's a couple of hobby pilots and folks that do it for fun. You know, I, I would say about half of the aircraft is in that category, and other half is our true business aircraft. They're not all jets. So. Okay, we have some highlights in twenty twenty, this airport does not survive without contributions either from its sponsors, as the FAA refers to you, the owners, or from businesses in the region. This year, the highlights were, we needed a new fuel truck badly. And Wise Markets was kind enough to see that we have one. Uh, and we needed an aircraft, we had an old John Deere lawnmower converted to tow airplanes around. Uh, it's not a really good idea when you're bumping million dollar airplanes into one another. Multi-million dollars like this. We are now, we secured a donation from SICA, the Sussex Wing Development Corporation. And we have a new state-of-the-art modern electronic, we control, remote-controlled aircraft. So, to combine, we also did some roof paintings and door repairs, all of those were donations supported by users of the airport. And, and all of that's a little about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year alone. So we're very close with that. So, one of the criticisms we often, I often get when we go to these meetings, asking for support from the sponsors, is, you know, help the people who use it to help you, and I guess they do, they help immensely. So, that was a hot one. And we keep, continuing to improve. And this is perhaps the important part. Uh, what does your money buy you? You know, you know, we, these are listed projects that we've completed in recent years, and we're coming up on a very large. The FAA and the government, as government does, has moved the goalposts on requirements for airspace and, and what the tolerances are, that one of the first screens that they show you. And we have to go through a four-million-dollar project to get into compliance. And adapt to what's known as WASS approaches and, and other, I forget your first background, so I'm looking like you may know what I'm talking about. But without getting into the weeds, we have to cut down a lot trees, put up a lot of lights, and change a lot of things that are going to cost about four million dollars over the next several years. That project begins in twenty twenty. So. But it should, it should, if we're successful, it should allow us to continue to maintain the airport, drive business and public service, and, and, and you have to know that you get an awfully good return on this investment. For every nickel that you put in, the government gives us ninety-five cents. All right, between seventy-five and ninety-five, depending on the product. So, most of them are, all of this obstruction removal will be at ninety-five cents on the dollar. If we expand runways, add taxiways, all of those projects, you know, we have to, we get that kind of return, or you do. And so it's almost, you know, where else do you get that kind of return of money? It's, you know, the proverbial no-brainer. But we have to come up with that local match, and that's always a challenge. So, and I saw somebody squinting the sea over here with the, the jets out there. That's just, that was just one day in September, walked out of the field. And all of those aircraft are visitors, none of them are based at Penn Valley. And they're all here related to business activity. Yeah, so that's the kind of business development that, you know, can occur if, if these thugs can get off of those aircraft and be within twenty minutes of their desired location. Then they are interested in developing in your area. So that's why we consider the airport a keystone component of this area's transportation infrastructure. All right, we're happy to have all of the recreational activity. You know, that's the heart and soul of the airport, but this is the meat and potatoes. So we have challenges, you know, increased regulatory compliance issues, more complex projects, FAA's airspace policy changes, and all of the technology upgrades that are occurring in aircraft today that require those of us on the ground to, you know, deal with a better maelström, a better approach path for those aircraft. So airspace challenging management is a big challenge, ahead of us is a four-million-dollar project. And of course, that has a budget impact, and I don't move in that way, there it is. So we're underfunded for these projects, as you might imagine, you know, four million dollars is a big one for this airport. And if we can't fund it, we risk losing it. So historically, these shortfalls have been offset with some dimensions, that's getting a little tougher in this climate. And if we forfeit those funds, we don't get them back, so we have to keep this going by coming up with those matching dollars. All right, we, we developed a, a budget strategy. And the airport is, just passed its one-year anniversary of managing all of the on-field activities. The subcontractor determined that he couldn't make a profit, so he left. This company called Energy Aviation, Williamsport. Uh, the airport is now running the airport quite successfully, because of superior management, of course. But we are doing well. But our strategy is basically three buckets. You know, we, we have fuel sales that cover all of our payroll. We have hangar rentals that cover all of the maintenance, which is enormous for the size of the sixty-five acres that we're managing. And our third bucket is sponsor support. All sponsor support is, is earmarked exclusively for these federal projects. Okay, so it's, any, any sponsor money is not paying my staff, it's not mowing the grass, it's not fixing any of the mechanical equipment that we have to maintain. For safety, you know, the lights are on there. You fill all this funny box of peaks, it goes in every little blue light, and it's a lot of them. So, so that's, that's where your money is stored. Every penny that the sponsors, you know, contribute annually to the airport returns ninety-five cents on the dollar. My chairman, however, would like everyone to consider a dollar and a quarter per resident. Uh, is, and of course, I think that would get somewhere, somewhere near a million dollars, we appreciate it, thank you. Seriously, your current, traditionally, you've been funding the airport with about twenty-one hundred dollars a year, certainly appreciated. This would raise it to something like thirteen, that may not be doable. But we certainly thank you for and, and look forward to your continued support of the airport. And I know that the businesses in town that, you know, see returns because of the airport greatly appreciated.
You said we're doing five one hundred?
Yes, sir. Which especially at the lower end, you know, but, but I mean, you know, I think Millburn, Dustless, Sumberry does, Northumberland, about the same. And the bulk of it is formed by Snyder and Union County, as, as you've, you know, large tax base and so. But, but my mission tonight was to reacquaint you, I hope I've done that. I hope you all stop by the airport and see what we're, or, or, I think we'll be impressed. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a public location in Snyder County. And the number of people that pass through the airport on voting then who said, I didn't know it was here. And it just so haces me, and we're happy they're voting, and happy they're, they get to see their airport. And we encourage all of you to do the same. You have questions, or you have other questions.
I have one member of the public that has to raise their hand to the floor regarding this topic.
True, this topic, that's fine.
Bree, did you want, have something you wanted to say?
And actually, it's, it's Michael Kula, on Brianna's account. Steve, thank you for, for all your comments. I just wanted to point out, having been the solicitor for the Penn Valley Airport Authority for more than five years now, and also serving as solicitor for the Northumberland County Airport Authority, and also being aware that there's a airport called the Danville Airport, which is actually located in Riverside. Council may have some questions about, oh my gosh, we have three small general aviation airports, you know, within reasonable distance of Sumberry, what's the difference between those? And I, I want to point out the main advantage that the Penn Valley Airport has is its runway length, and that's where it drives commercial traffic. Um, I think it's important to note that a Geisinger Medical Center chose Penn Valley as its base of operations for one of its helicopters, and, and that deal is in place. Certainly, you know, all airports serve a role in their communities, but in this particular example, I think Penn Valley Airport has the runway length which supports the commercial traffic because they can support jets coming in. Uh, that is, that is critical. Uh, and it's also unique that the Penn Valley Airport Authority is comprised of the nine stakeholders that Mr. Bowers explained. Uh, as opposed to, say, Northumberland County Airport out there in Elysberg, which is a separate airport authority, but really there's no multiple municipal investment in that. Uh, it's simply a, an authority that was established by the county many, many years ago, and that tends to serve a lot of private aviation type services. Uh, and then, the airport over in Danville, the, or rather Riverside, technically was a joint venture between Northumberland and Montour Counties. Uh, my understanding of the history of that is, once upon a time, Montour County really wanted an airport, and they didn't have the land available, but there was some property in Riverside, and so that was created. And, and that again supports some private pilots and, and private aircraft. So, in terms of a, a commercial driver, Penn Valley Airport is the place to be that is supporting the local economy. And I just want to share the, the old axiom that a, a rising tide lifts all ships. And, and therefore, it's beneficial to the valley as a whole, and Sumberry particularly as a stakeholder in that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mike.
I hope you're not building.
No, no, this one's on the house, Steve, and that's on the record.
Um, I will point out that we, we're a driver with focus at the PA and drive on the summary text file, no project, or the marketing that included knowing the Penn Valley Airport's proximity to the property and making that as, as one of the assets of the, of the properties that we own. So, it is looked at favorably in that sort of marketing.
And actually, let's say thirty-two hundred square of loyal. Uh, we, we can pass about Penn Valley Airport in the middle of that. You surround that with Harrisburg, state of the, Williamsport to Pasleton, back to Harrisburg, Glidreding, I'm sorry, and back to Harrisburg. Inside of that circle, we are the only airport that can manage that. So if you have a solid, solemn burden moment in that airspace, we are your partners. That's why another one of you since said, uh, applies.
Does it score answer?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been with the airport?
Uh, since I retired, didn't want to be home anymore. Now, I actually, this was, I was hanging out, and I got a call that the airport had a problem from the, Mike Applebaum was the solicitor at the time. And he said, I need someone to cut down some trees or something, take care of that. And I said, sure. And that was in two thousand fifteen or something, and I've been hanging out there ever since, so. So it's become a retirement job, and thoroughly enjoy it, it's just a fun place to hang out. A lot of interesting things going on. And if I had time, I can, I can, I can give you horror stories, keep you entertained for a couple hours. But, but it is, I had no idea myself.
Another quick question on how many air, I guess airplanes on average go in and out of here on a daily basis, or do you?
We, there's now a system that actually tracks that just started this year, believe it or not, and that we can actually get that data. And we, we have to pay for it, but we're going to probably do that. And they've been collecting it now for a year. Uh, and, and I can answer that question, it's embarrassing that we can't. But, but I've seen some of the graphs. And I see, I can see the COVID dip, where our traffic dropped ninety percent uh, in the early months of COVID. And I could see them come up in September, August and September, I said we're back. I can just see them plummet again, now they've started to announce all of these spikes in the COVID, you know, situation. I can just see him plummet again now that they've started to announce all of these spikes in the uh COVID uh you know, situation. So in that we have not had data, I can't honestly answer that. And I think this year is going to be average, and I think it's going to take another year or two, and I definitively uh give you that answer. That's all I'm going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we're skipping ahead to the wetland consolidation. All right, sir. And Joel, if you can help explain the process as well?
Sure. Um the mayor had asked me to go over some plans that were drawn up by these folks at MEC Tech. Um I did so, and in doing so, I felt that it was pretty important that I meet with them so that they could explain to me some of the idiosyncrasies of the plans themselves. We did that, and I felt it was important that the ideas we brought to council so that there was a consensus as to how to avert certain potential problems. Um therefore, we have this meeting.
My name is Scott Schombach, MEC Tech Incorporated, licensed surveyor with the company. You don't mind off my social business, but this is probably the worst thing you can try to be heard. Um so we did the the survey uh on this property, and there are a couple items that are outstanding with this. And I one of them, I remember it's happening, nobody cares. But as soon as the surveyor shows up and points things out, it seems like then, you know, it shines a light. And since there are some things that you're intending to do with this property, I wanted to bring them to light and uh seek your direction on how you prefer to handle them. We have to do with um a couple areas of encroachment uh on your properties. Um if you were to look um with more being up at the very top of the of the sheet, the rectangular, it's parcel ending in one to one. It says uh the text there will say quick claim deed, building encroachment. Um the quick claim deed is my text is a possible solution to this. Um a lot of times it's easier to, and Joel can, you feel free to jump in at any point. Um it's easier to handle situations adequately rather than try to fight them out in court. Now, this is half this building I'm as approaching here has been there for more than twenty one years. In fact, it's probably been there two or three times, and I also don't live in this building. But it does go over the line by about a foot and a half approximately. So it is an encroachment. If they were to file for adverse possession, it is likely that they would win that in court, course courts cost money. Joel, you can jump in at any time.
Oh, they know that.
And uh so what we are basically doing is proposing a solution um to rectify the situation and allow the property owner to enjoy the use of his building. Um sign off on on any issues that that would come up in the future as far as him trying to make claim to that. So in this case, uh there is a minimal solution. And then there's a what I'll call, Joel, would you say, a common sense solution to maybe make this a little bit better than just skimming along the side of the building? Now, I have a full size set here. That's a half scale. If any of you wish to for me to move this so that you could see it on a full scale, just ask me. Um so the building is over the line uh along the lane was L four along that line. When we uh when Joel and I were talking, even if the if the property was right along the edge of the building, it does not afford the landowner, the building owner, the ability to really maintain his building. Because as soon as he walks along the edge to do anything, he's off his property. Um on the rear side, along what we call L five, that line, the building isn't encroaching, but it is so close that on the end of my statue would have a hard time fitting along the line and the building. So what we are proposing as for the council to consider is whether or not in this case, there would want to be a quick claim deed filed on behalf from the city to the landowner that would extend three feet from the building. Again, on the on L four, he's already across the line by about a foot and a half. And he could probably push buttons, go to court, and would have a reasonable chance of winning the fact that that he's improved it and it's over the line. Um but in order to let him, let's say he has to replace the roof or work on on the soffits or whatever. Um we are suggesting that maybe the the city would want to go one step further and say, you know, we're going to give you a little bit extra so that you can maintain it. Um it will not have any effect on your proposed use of the building um the the situations that you're looking at. Um in this case, this was actually surrounded by the wetlands. Um but it would not inhibit what you're planning for future use of that building.
What do you mean the property?
Yes, the property wouldn't inhibit it by by giving one three feet beyond that. In this case, uh we were discussing a quick claim deed would probably be the easiest thing to do. Um in that you could write a deed with the needs and bounds. It's one property owner could easily be described. And that quick claim deed would then be transferred to the property owner, and he would have a clean title to that property. So we'll call that one situation.
And I'll jump in if you don't mind. Sure. Um just to kind of reiterate what Scott said. The idea here is to give them what's already theirs, basically. Twenty one years is adverse possession. So if you own or if you use property openly and notoriously for a period exceeding twenty one years, it becomes yours. Okay, under the law. In this case, their building was sitting a foot and a half onto city property for a period way in excess of twenty one years, I'd say by the look of the building. And therefore, they would be successful should we go to court. I mean, that's my honest legal opinion. That being said, Scott and I have discussed, and I think it may have even been my suggestion, not only should we give them the foot and a half, but enough area around that they can maintain the building, not only for the sake of keeping the building nice, and it's going to be right along the side of the wetlands, but also for liability purposes, because if they do have to work on the building, if they do have to do anything, I'd rather have them doing it on their own ground than on city ground. Okay, so that's the other, that's the other legality behind the idea. Not only would it be nice to do it for the people, but it's also kind of legally prudent. Um that's where I jump in.
And and I think to add on to that, without being, you know, stated definitively, but I think if you would have, if you would have looked back, that twenty one years probably lapsed in a timeframe prior to your owning the property. I don't remember when you purchased this property. Um but I think I think it was sixteen years ago.
Yeah.
Correct. And I think that situation technically happened even before it was a city, because there may be some question, you know, about claiming adverse possession.
Question, is three foot enough?
That was a good question, Rick, because I actually wrote down minimum. I'm not sure if three foot is enough. Three foot is the minimum that Scott and I had discussed. It's up to you guys to decide what you'd offer to the owners of this property. I was thinking five.
So what what about the other properties that are in that corner though?
In that, they're fine. It would have no effect on them. No, we're only talking about along lines L four and L five. That's the only line that the buildings, the others are backyard and so on.
And then
That's basically like come in on this if you think I'm saying something that's not. That's five foot is what the city normally uses for setbacks between properties so that people can easily get through there.
Right. Well, I
That's actually correct, but not. Um we have to look at the frontage, the baggage, or the rear, the front, and the sides. Um and I guess a couple of my questions looking at this, and I apologize for my solace. Um was this even reviewed by our city engineer to get it, our city engineers review opinion on this? Um also, um is this a consolidation or a subdivision plan?
Yes.
I'm not seeing any. Yeah, it it is both. A consolidation is a subdivision. Subdivision is anytime you change a lot line. In this case, eventually, our goal
Consolidation if you're taking multiple lots and making them one.
Correct.
That's the difference between a subdivision.
No, actually, they're the same thing. Regardless of that, um this is this is a step that we need to take in the in the effort to bring this uh to this point, because when I set the lines and and technically, I mean, your question about the engineer, um technically, I'm a surveyor. I'm licensed to do that, whereas an engineer is not from that standpoint. So usually, the the surveyor, in fact, I can't even set lines. It's only through the courts. That's why it was reviewed by your solicitor who goes through the courts.
Correct.
In this case, so the protocol is to go through through the courts, through the the lawyers and so on with a a licensed surveyor, which is in my position.
Well, we went through another project a few years ago that our city swiss or I'm sorry, city swisser wasn't involved, but so was our city in city engineer to confirm that all the city lot lines and everything through.
But I don't through the deeds. I don't, I don't care if you want to have your engineer look at it. That's
I guess without getting really tied up in this, it's five foot. And you feel the five foot is, and it's not going to have the adverse effect on what you want to do with the property.
Does it look like it?
Uh that would be, that would be a legal opinion for Joel.
Yeah, Scott and I
And five foot, I actually went and looked at this building, and five foot would be exactly. And if they want to use a pressure washer on it, is what we said, so they probably need five feet. Exactly.
Rick, if you get the five foot, that wouldn't um impact our maintenance or anything. Well, I'm not looking at our lab building. If we give them five foot, and that lessens our lab building to the extent of some ways on ladder, or if the ladder's out, only with the three foot. You know, they leave where we did them a map.
As a surveyor, I don't want to give what you want, okay? I mean, it's up to you. You you want, as Joel said, we thought three feet was a minimal. Um we're going to be a little more generous up here when we get to that point for some of the same reasons you're saying. But um if if you as a, I'm looking for your guidance as you say, okay, here's what we want to do here. Then I can make the plan that way as I break it then forward through plan one and
And that, let me jump in real quick, because this goes to what Mike was talking about as well. What we're looking for tonight isn't to say, Joel, give them a quick claim deed tomorrow. What we're looking for is conditional approval, which would allow us to get the documents ready to present to everybody else to review. Okay, so it's going to have to go through various other entities to be reviewed. We just need to know that the city council is okay with the idea, these couple of ideas so that we can move forward, not that we're going to do it tomorrow.
That sounds perfect. I just could add a lot of things. If I could just add one more thing, um with what Joel just said there was perfect. Um this plan here, we need a little bit more signature blocks. We're going to need Northumberland County planning approval. We're going to need city summary approval. We're going to need city council approval.
I I understand that.
Signature blocks.
This is
I get all that. I get all that, sir. No disrespect. I get all that. But these are some things that need to be brought up, so when when it is presented, it's presented properly.
By the way, I think they're aware of that. This is just a preliminary explaining to council and the mayor what the situations are they found in the initial survey. The five foot would be ideal. Now, going back to Joel to Trotmans, which is the owner of the building up there.
We're, I'm assuming, yes.
Yes, okay. Now, since we're incurring some costs here, and we're giving them five foot of land to maintain their building, which is encroached along the one you know, the south and I think I've got my direction right there. I'd be looking for some compensation back to Trotmans to say, hey, we're going to do this for you. It's costing us X to bear the deeds and so forth, and the survey, giving yourself some back off the property under some different cost.
Well, and that's that's completely up to you guys. The only thing I would say is these lines, and Scott and I had talked about that, they're shooting these lines anyway. Okay, they have to shoot these lines and do a legal description for this whole area, obviously. So that isn't really an added expense. The added expense would be my cost doing a deed or a quiet title. But I don't charge the city extra to do that. I just do that as part of my monthly retainer. So the filing fees would be the only, it's like a hundred and fifty dollars, whatever. And, you know, you can certainly seek whatever you want. I'm just saying I don't think it'll be a huge cost to the city.
Yeti is is still tackled.
Absolutely. No, I understand completely, and I agree with you. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, and uh and these panel owners, they can decline this option, right?
They can say, we don't want this. You know, we don't want the extra funds. They can say, we're, we just want to leave it the way it is. In which case, we're back in the drawing board of cutting a line and saying, you're on our property. Um but I think they have to be. I think it's a pretty good idea for them. It's a pretty good deal for them. Um because they're not going to be able to sell that property with that lien on the title. Okay, there is a mark on the title because we now know that the property extends upon city property, so they can't sell it. So I think it's a real good deal for that.
Contacting these people, you would do that?
I will. I mean, that's that's up to you guys. You tell me what to do, I'll do it. Um I have no problem with that. Maybe I didn't know if the mayor wanted to do it, Jody, but I can certainly do it. Right, right. And I would probably do it in writing. I'd give, I'd send them a letter, give them my phone number, say, if you have questions, concerns, have your attorney contact me. If you don't have an attorney, you call me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, this is the easy one. Um so we do, do you want the attorney, we want to give him now, do we want that much you need to say? I'm I'm providing that has an effect to the property, so. Do you think that is good with all the stuff we have five feet that's adequate? For like, I mean, I mean, for what the city code is or everything else.
For what we're spoken here tonight, I don't see discrepancy.
And Joe, providing them this additional five foot on the two sides here, they they and and this would be for you too. They would be against any way of building any kind of additional structure.
No, 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 no.
Did we lose Chris here?
No, he's still there.
Okay, let's move up to the I look at this sometime. I guess it'd be the the southwest corner parcel thirty and twenty nine. Uh parcel thirty, last property, the last name is Drum. Twenty nine, property, last name is Smith. Again, if you look at the right above where it says Found Railroad Spike, there's a there's a section of basically a garage that sticks out over the property line and is an encroachment on the property. Um there's also some concrete drives that I think is being utilized and so on and so forth. So there's a building encroachment there. And then to the east side of parcel twenty nine Smith, as you can see there, the the property line actually slightly skims across the house. Uh but it takes a good portion of their deck and porch. Again, that's a building encroachment. We need to, you know, discuss how you wish to do it. We could be very minimal, and if you can, I don't know if you can see it on your French mountain, the white green line. that goes around, um, that I would basically suggest would be the, the middle amount of, of relief that you'd want to do to, to kind of clean this up. There's some evidence, depending on how you measure things and where streets were and where they are now with distances. That would end up a little bit of a claim standard that their property should go to the green line, even though the deed that you bought, the property does not do that. But again, we were looking at it from the standpoint with, with Joel of, of liability. Um, if you would look at line L fourteen, there is an area there that, um, is utilized by the owners. I think there's some situation with vehicles being parked there, but also physically, this is the only, the only place that parcel twenty nine Smith can get into their backyard with anything other than pedestrian traffic. Um, so basically, if she wants to, I think it's a lady that owns it. If Smith wants to delay that, I spoke with one, you're sorry. Um, when Smith would want, if they would want to go back there and let's say change the stuff, sign up or do anything like that. They had to get equipment into their backyard. They physically couldn't do it because along Eighth Street, it's down over a, a very steep back. Um, and again, on their, on their, to be through their deck. So what Joel and I were talking about there, um, we, we, first we banded around about whether or not the city would want to consider an easement um, to allow them to get around the rear of their property. And then being a lawyer, of course, he was, so on, he, he comes up with liabilities. And he said, I'd rather give it to them than put an easement on our property. Good advice, in my opinion. So if you look at the red line, that red line extends fifteen feet beyond the building.
To the west.
To the, to the, kind of sort of the northwest.
This is on the Ray Street side you're talking about?
This is on the Ray Street side, if you look at L fourteen. Um, you can see where there's a little bit of a gray line there through a building, right? If, if that building line were extended fifteen feet so that they would have a, basically a, a way to get behind their building and into that.
These are ours?
Are these are ours?
Yes, sir.
Not a problem. Um, again, that would be, uh, uh, Joel was looking at it from the standpoint of allowing the property owners to continue the use of maintenance, you know, for availability for them to get to their property.
You show those two marks, trees?
No, I don't. What I can tell you about, uh.
We discussed those, Jim.
It's point of discussion for this evening, which side of the line of red are the trees?
Yours.
Right now, even after the red goes on?
Even after, even as the red goes on the way I have it shown, part of discussion.
That's one of the questions we have.
We can move that line over to the other side of the red tree.
Absolutely.
Um, I think, I mean, this is going to be a little bit illegal. There's a little bit of folklore, but you got Joel to work your way through that, um, but if we would, if she's willing, let me back up one more step. I'm going to ahead of myself a little bit. If you'll notice, I have this labeled boundary line agreement. It is not labeled a quick claim deed, it's labeled a boundary line agreement. We are, in this case, we are giving them a document that says this is the city's property, we're giving you a deed saying it's now your property. It's a conveyance, just as though you bought a hundred acre farm, except for it's a quick claim deed, not. A boundary line agreement is saying, she's saying, basically, I say she, because it was a lady I talked, I don't know. If it's Ken Smith. I'm, I'm sorry, I, you brought her the, the general. She actually is mowing and has picnic stuff, you know, and she's kind of early pushed the line to you, to you for benefit quite a bit. A boundary line agreement says, Joel, I just speak, that we agree and you agree that the property line here is right here. And so we're just agreeing that that's where the line's at, and we are not going to re, you know, change. Technically, once they sign it, they can't change your mind. It's locked in just the same. So when it will come to her deed, it'll say this is a deed, subject to a boundary line agreement that's recorded in a courthouse where all parties involved said, here's where we agree. She's been maintaining over here, she's been doing this over here. We, we are going to make this a line, we'll set a pin right here, and we'll give a description exactly where that line agreement is.
Why would you do that in a quick deed for this?
Simply, partially, because I did not survey her property. So I, part of the line agreement would be that we make no claim to where this line is between Drum and Smith. The new line along her property line. It goes from here to here, and the property line on the rear is going to go from here to here. Wherever that may fall, and that's up to Joel to craft that language to accomplish that.
So what you're saying is that is all going to be in the Smith.
To the point I could. Right here is the boundary between Drum and Smith, right there. Here, let me pull this over.
This green line?
No, no. This line is right here. I know what you're talking about, they're right down, since half, so you have this property, half the other property.
Saying we come back here, this, this is actually like that. Some, some of the search, some of the.
Correct, but we're not saying where it begins and where it ends. So I don't want to definitively say it goes from here to here.
So, but then I guess what I'm trying to say is from here, here, to here, this will be drums. And then from here, she's still going to get his permission to get on that property.
That's, that's the other thing. See now, one of the, some of the things that we, you would want to put as stipulations or um, requirements of this lot, this boundary line agreement. In order for, for the city to agree to this, being kind, um, is two things. One, you can't park car in back here. You have to keep that free and open as a, as, as an open path, so you restrict the property. We'll agree to this as long as you keep this open, because we're doing this to the benefit of this property too. And you have to, this drum has to give easements to go across here. So you, you would have to, Joel, I'm assuming, we could, you can craft those words to make it that this cannot be parked closed, it has to be open. And and, and this is an easement to, to keep that, keep that.
The line runs along Drum's property, doesn't change. It runs toward to that corner. And the corner's going to be extended back to pick up the two trees, which runs parallel Smith's line.
I'm not sure you said that right. You may have think it's right, but I'm not sure you said it right, so let me. Okay, Drum's line will change and that his will extend out to that as well.
Right.
But, but, uh, that's, oh man, I hate. But left and right.
Behind, in Drum's property, we're extending the line, making that access easing the Smith people, that part doesn't change, that width.
That width, that width will be fifteen feet.
Right. This, this instance here doesn't change. You're just going to move the pin out here, move the pin out here, and pick up the two trees.
Right. And then, correct, yeah, that's going to be fifteen feet, correct there, yes. So what we're saying is, we aren't moving this back anymore. We're just, if we want to be, we want to move this over to far enough to catch the, the, I think it's one, one tree. Well, there, well, so there is, there is another tree right, right back here.
Two big trees.
Yes, 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 yes. And actually, that, that dark black line is to the inside corner, we found a really loud beat with our metal detector in the root, but I didn't want to damage the root to try, I think it's down there. So I'm thinking, we get, I mean, we'll make sure, if you want those trees to be on their property.
We'll make sure, I was to be reasonable, these are massive.
No, I know, she's had issues with the trees that damaged the root.
So we're going to, I mean, this is my opinion, I mean, obviously, we're giving some feet there for the right way and all that stuff, but given the trees, that's kind of not right in my opinion, because we're, did that pass through the cost of the city for the person?
They can't afford to.
I mean, plus we're having the, the money to do this, if I can use some of those trees in the process of.
The other, the other option was cut it out.
That, is, that thought came up, um, just so you guys know, the, we did discuss the fact that either if they want, if the property owner wants the trees, they can have them, okay? It was my thought process. And I'm not telling you what to do, obviously, but that's how I thought of it. If they don't want the trees, that's fine, but they are a liability, and they probably need to come down.
She's contacted me a few times, and she, she wants the city to take care of these trees again.
So if that's the case, and if we take the trees down, spend probably the opposite six thousand dollars, there's no sense moving the line anymore.
Not if we're taking the tree down.
And, and if you're, you could give her the option.
I say give her the option, like you said, but she wants the tree, that's her responsibility, she doesn't have to treat it, not our responsibility.
And if you're taking them down, I don't know, they may be, we'd be sold away. Something's going wrong.
Well, that's why you got.
That's what shirts store.
In all honesty, as I said, I'm here to do your, your bidding.
So, so those two options for the property.
Those two options, you got it.
Then there would be, if, if they don't want the trees, then there would be no benefit or no, nothing to say, well, okay, we're going to buy your fifteen feet on Ray Street sign. To, uh, so I get from back and then this way.
Well, if we get rid of the trees, if we, if they get rid of the trees, if they don't want the trees, I would say we keep the red line back to the way it is.
Oh, we still keep the red line?
Yeah, yeah, because you've got a voting privilege right here. And he, and she wants to get in there. It's, this, the, the tree discussion is more whether or not this moves out to cover the trees that are back here, okay? This here, I think, we're fine on by being fifteen feet away from the building.
With that there, with an easement?
With an easement, with no, the, the stipulations that kind of protect the city.
Okay, and then, well, I guess, you, you, and how far would this come back, the way it is right now?
It would follow the red line.
It would follow the red line. I'd even ask that, I have the paper, it's not the opposite. No, 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 I think I remember the numbers, so roughly. I don't have the exact number, but from that corner perpendicular to the line, I believe was seven additional feet.
Okay.
From the front corner to the red line, I think was twelve feet. Those are round numbers from my memory, but I think those were correct.
Seven, question more?
And I think out here, it, it was, it's like, it, it's a little bit stupid, it's like fourteen, it's fifteen to sixteen.
Okay.
It's along that backside. And again, if you think fifteen is too much, you want to cut it back to ten, we can do that, you know, or.
Is there any parking here right now?
No. They, so this, this, this section, all the, the neighbors have been storing RVs there, vehicles there, people from out of the area.
Somebody seen this food truck, she has a food truck, this Drum's wife, her girlfriend has a food truck that they go to different places with, and I thought that was part of it.
And it, it, if, there's, there's various, if you look on Goodworth. Okay, various times you see vehicles parked, I don't know what they are exactly. But then that's why we discussed taking the stipulation that we'll, we'll, if you agree that this will be the boundary, you're, you're getting, you know, additional, you need to agree keep it completely open and make, you know, insurance. I don't want you to spell that.
All right, so how are we with this point of property?
I like the fifteen in the rear, I think that's a good number.
If, if she.
If, yeah, if everyone agrees, so, yes, correct. And then on the other, on the other side, the two options, if they want the trees, it's their responsibility, they don't, so our responsibility, red line stays the same.
All right, great.
Uh, well said. And I'm sure that if she wanted to pay for the trees to gain the land and want to take trees down on her own, you would, oh yeah, you would work with her. You know, to.
Joe, so you have all this understanding?
I think so. I wrote it all down, put it that way.
Are we, are we done with that, or is there another?
I, no, those are the only two areas that, that I need clarification on. Um, and then, you know, once, when we work through the boundary line agreements and get everything, you know, recorded then I can, I'll actually be able to refer on these plans that, that will be submitted to the documentation where the recorder in the courthouse, the boundary line agreements, quick claim deeds, I'll document all that on this plan. Finalize this plan and then, uh, be able to break it.
And so you'll keep in contact with Joel and vice versa?
Yes, and before we move on to the next topic, though, I'm sorry, I have to do this. We need a motion to allow me to contact these folks if you decide you want me to contact the folks. As well as to give conditional approval for Scott to create these plans. Um, the condition approval would be such that pending the okay of the other entities that need to okay everything. The city is okay with these ideas, okay, that we're just stating.
So when Joel just said, I make that into a form of motion, do I have a second?
Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out how to put that into a motion for the minute.
A motion to allow me to contact property owners. And to prepare or to use a quick claim deed on one discussed parcel and a boundary line agreement on the other discussed parcel.
Parcels.
Parcels, thank you, Scott. To contact the folks. Oh, to make the offer, I'll, I'll come back to the council for the decision. But I'd make the offer to the people that would go one of the two ways.
But if they're free to take the trees down, they get the extended property, you're not going to get stuck at that right.
You got it.
Hey, sir.
Yes.
Carl Ovech.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
I'm going to stay in, because without seeing it, I have no idea what you guys have been talking about, so. I'll just abstain and trust you guys.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you so much.
I will leave, if you want to, I will also leave this for.
All right, they'll spin right there.
Yeah, seven four thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and sixty four cents. And expenses for the general fund, I made a motion with the panel.
Carl Ovech.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Princess.
Yes.
And there, there's, uh, eight requests for tax exoneration, six are deceased. One is low income, and one is SSI totaling five hundred seventy nine dollars and fifty nine cents. And make a motion to accept those requests for exoneration.
Second.
Hey, sir.
Yes.
Carl Ovech.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Princess.
Yes. All right, uh, Chief, Lexipol.
Uh, Lexipol, uh, this is a new program that's been coming out, a couple, another department across the river that has it. Talked to their department officers, they really, really like it. Uh, Lexipol, basically, it's a, a lot of services that they'll be able to handle for the police department, like policy manuals, daily training, policy updates, web-based delivery stuff, reports. Um, in, in light of COVID nineteen, a lot of this, uh, the upgrades for the, uh, policy manual alone is going to help us for accreditation purposes. Um, it's going to take our manual that we currently have, and it's going to squeeze it down, make it, uh, better, more efficient. Um, it is a price of forty eight hundred dollars and seventy, forty eight, seventy nine. Uh, they have agreed to break it up in quarterly payments. Um, but it is something that I think we could use, uh, for the police department going forward, for the twenty first century policing. Uh, again, a lot of the things with the policy updates is. Uh, again, a lot of the things with the policy updates is that if you abide by their policies, which they are standardized and credited through, uh, PA chiefs, so it will help us if, if something goes wrong, they send their attorneys to defend it if something would ever go wrong. Uh, also, uh, with the book, also, we, I have a plan already ready to go, if we need be, that we will roll this out slowly and surely so all the officers get it, there's a lot of training with it on the front end, but again, it's, it's something that we could, we have it in the police department upgrades in our budget, so it's not gonna really, like, like an addition, but it will be a benefit for the police department. Also with that, there is also, uh, Police One Academy, which is part of Lexipol, now they merged, uh, that price is a thousand ninety-two dollars. Uh, there's a, a one-time up, uh, one-time fee of three hundred dollars, so every year it'd be seven hundred ninety-two dollars, I would use the training budget to pay for that on a yearly basis, that is, training will be able to use every year towards our required training we have to do for the state plus other trainings, again, that the, with police reform is probably the hot topic right now in police policing, uh, it's gonna help us in the long run again, so.
In the long run, it'll help cut down on the traveling.
It's also gonna help, we're gonna be able to do a lot of in-house training, there'll still, still be some out, outside training that the officers will have to go to, but this, we'll be able to do a lot of in-house stuff, uh, right, right at the police station, it's all computer web-based, but it in, in the long run, it's all a big benefit for the whole department as a whole and the city, liability wise.
Alright, make a motion to accept, uh, the Lexipol and the.
Uh, it's Lexipol and Police One Academy, and just that the motion has that you can sign all documents relating to it.
Alright, so.
Right there?
I have a question, forty-eight seventy-nine, that's a one-time payment?
It's a yearly, it's a yearly fee.
So it's five thousand a year and plus another seven ninety-two a year?
Yeah.
Which currently already sits in the yearly budget for the training for the department, and it would cut down on the travel training for the leaving the area.
The seven ninety-two, that's gonna come out of the training budget, that's, they're two kind of separate things, they're one entity, but there's two separate things we're getting out of it. Uh, and, and the, and the, the manual thing, part about it is, it's, it's phenomenal for our accreditation, it's gonna keep us up to date on everything. And they up, they update it and then we review it, we can even add our own things that apply to the city of Sunbury, uh, but they add things to it, they're on top of it, like, it's one thing after the other.
That's year.
It's a yearly fee, correct.
You don't sign a ten-year contract?
No, it's a year-to-year contract.
I think it's needed for.
How much training was done this year?
At the beginning, we had, uh, I went to a couple of schools, Travis, Sergeant went to a couple of schools, the Corporal went to a couple of schools, and then COVID hit, we had a couple, we had about, we had about three or four trainings that were canceled, and then we started picking up some other trainings that the officers went to, we had a, an officer that's certified in bike uh, training now, uh, we have an officer that is a wiretap specialist, he's going to a DRE school here in December. So we have things that are coming back, but again, with COVID, you don't know when they're gonna shut things down.
Okay. So, am I the first one up?
Jolynn?
What?
Vote time.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Iceberg? Carlovich?
Yes.
I was fascinated by wiretaps.
Police chief contract. Um, so we all have the updated police chief contract, this contract's been worked on since the middle of the summer. Uh, the first year will start, it's a five-year contract, the first year starting at eighty-five thousand dollars, with a two percent increase for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and a zero percent increase for the last year of the contract. Uh, do you make a motion to accept this contract? Set it.
And the overtime, there's no overtime?
And there's no overtime, you like overtime, the chief would be able to accumulate his reimbursable overtime to the city.
And then, of course, it took out the.
One debt.
One debt, exactly.
Probably know that, that's something to give up.
Correct.
Then.
Second. Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
No.
Iceberg?
Yes.
Carlovich?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
And I just wanted to record to say, like, my vote was nothing against Brad, Aaron, Chief, things being rigged up to put a position in Brad's contract, so.
Alright, thank you for that, alright, let's move on, holiday parking is off.
So, uh, this is just for, um, establishing the date for holiday parking, free meter parking, beginning Friday, November twenty-seventh, Friday after Thanksgiving, and then go through, um, January ninth, January tenth is the Monday, so we're starting that Monday to resume the parking year fees on the allow. I don't know that it requires, I, I saw a vote, I was told after I put it on here, that it really is only a discussion item, so, okay, here we go. First reading for Bill twenty-twenty-eighteen, that's this, this is special private events, this is reel, repeal and replace ordinance number eleven sixty-eight, which was adopted in November of ninety-two, and currently in the section one sixty-three dash three C of the city code. This has to do with regulation of traffic and parking in kind of a crazy session or a public event. We originally, uh, I originally presented this for first reading on October twelfth, but it was tabled because there were a lot of questions that needed to be worked out. There was a council work session on October twenty-sixth, and then the revisions that were discussed were incorporated into the new draft. This, uh, ordinance will establish the permit requirement for events in a public right-of-way or public property, it has removed the permit fee. Um, we also added the definition for a private event, such as wedding, birthday things, and provisions for the private use of public facilities. The council continues to have the authority to assess fees to cover costs of city resources, thus warrant of an event, should that be necessary.
They've all complicated for special events.
Make a motion to pass the first reading?
Any questions on that moment? So the private use, private events number five of the reverse, uh, letter B. The submitted private use of public facility application, is that different than this actual application?
Yes. Because we currently have, we do have the current application for private use of public facilities, so it does sort of separate the two things.
Can I, let me jump in real quick, I think there may be a misunderstanding, if I'm wrong, I apologize, okay? But my initial problem with this was that I felt, kind of like Jim said, that we're getting pretty picky. However, upon looking at it again, this only comes into effect if it's gonna obstruct the city's street or sidewalk, if it will take place on city property, or if it takes place on private property, but the city has to provide special services, such as, you know, streets or anybody, or the police or anybody else. So that's the only special events this is gonna pertain to, so you can still have a birthday party at the marina or whatever, you know what I mean, or at the Kid, Kid's Gardens, and you can still get your pictures taken and everything else. The only things that are really going to fall under this necessity would be if you're gonna obstruct the city's street, if it's gonna take place on city property, or if the city is gonna be providing services, and then it may be necessary, only for our ability to read that or something else.
Steven? Steve?
Yeah.
Have you reviewed this?
So.
These were sent out a couple of times, so.
I mean, the only, I mean, the only way it affects us is when they put on the application, if they need to, they need anything from the DPW, they need, obviously, in the form of, we talked about, get, state that in there, other than that, it doesn't affect us in any way.
What it does, it depends on what Steve tries to get together and so where that's where I told him.
That would be on the, the application, I'm talking about revising, saying what they need from either the parks or the wreck or the street department, but that has nothing to do, correct or wrong, Greg, with, like, what this means, that's just application. There's two separate things, it's the same, so the application.
This, this ordinance is, the intention is to give it the standing so that we will, we will implement a, a standard process for reviewing the permit. What we want is to make clear that there is a permit process, that we need certain information to be able to evaluate the, the permit application and determine what support's gonna be needed from the city, that we circulate this application to the affected departments prior to giving it the approval. And, and this is to help, um, eliminate some of these, um, cases where we've had last-minute, um, things that had to come up that, oh my gosh, you know, this thing's happened this weekend and we didn't, we didn't realize it, and we need to provide the support. So this is just trying to make a little, this a bit more organized.
Then Joe, if we have a, we have a large group of protesters in this city, we've, you got a thousand people blocking Market Street, and they don't have a permit because that's a special event, they're now a violation, correct?
Yes.
The sixty days prior, we know it's gonna be broken all the time.
So there is a clause about, uh, the sixty days that, um, if special circumstances have come up, um, they can still get a permit applied for in case of an emergence of an occasion after the said sixty-day period has expired.
Don't we all do any words and say, who makes the decision, if an emergency situation comes up?
I mean, I assume if that was the case, and something was sent out to the council.
This isn't, this isn't say to approve, it doesn't.
You mean, who determines if it's an emergency that would come?
No, approve anything, or you just say something to the city, Chris.
Well, then it goes off to who would reply, who like to say something like, street is gonna be closed, then it would go to see if something, for parks and wreck, and they go up to Jim, make sure nothing conflicting, I mean, that's, that's who would deny or approve if it's gonna happen or not.
Correct.
This just gives us, this just gives us the right to have all of this in place, and then a process still has to be made after this is done, and still has to be decided on internally, but this at least starts the process to be able to have the conversation, like we said at the, at the work session.
Jolynn, what's the timeframe you need for a pen dock boost?
At least sixty days for a pen dock.
So there you go, I mean, that would. And emergency would happen anyway, so.
So, closing the street, if there's another situation.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that it has to be an emergency, it says, except in the case of the emergence
Oh, yeah.
of an occasion after the sixty-day period, so if there were an occasion that came up like, um, a celebration, you wanna have a parade for the football team.
Yeah.
You can still do that.
The thing is a little confusing, except in the case of emergency after sixty-six days that expires.
That's legal talk, Joe, was that?
Joe, that may have been me, um, the, I don't remember quite honestly, but the, what it means is that, except in the case of an emergent of the emergence, so the beginning of an occasion, basically, if it's thirty days, something comes up, you can still do it, at ten days, something comes up. So if the field hockey team wins the state championship, and we didn't know it was gonna happen sixty days before it happened, we can solve a parade for them or whatever else, I mean, that was a good example. I'm just too verbose, it's all too much.
Any other questions?
I'm still motioning to accept the first reading.
I'm thinking, Chris, and if there are no other questions, question, I'll second Chris's motion, however you move on this.
Thank you.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Iceberg?
Yes.
Carlovich?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Regarding the, uh, strategic management planning program, um, in speaking with Mike Carpenter from the ECEB and the consultants, um, they're at a point now where they have gathered a lot of information, they're beginning to put together a report, preliminary things that they wanna consider in their report, and they recommended, um, establishing a committee, especially to have a represent, a representative from council, um, and then some others, the city administrator, the city clerk, um, a representative from the Department of Accounts and Finance, whoever you would like to choose that to be, you know, the accountant or not, um, so that they can be in discussion with the consultants as the consultants are putting together their report. So, I mean, it's up to the council, the, you know, tell me who you think you, you would best like to have on that committee.
Brian, Kevin should be on council planning, that's Rick.
Yeah.
Council president, Josh. Just some free time.
I like, I, you know, you're surprised by the weather line though, in some days.
You also need Jody?
Uh, so I, I recommend that the city administrator, and I also recommend the city clerk, because the city clerk is managing a whole lot of the programs they're looking at.
I'm, I'm fine, yeah, I'm fine, I'm good, I'll, Mr. Merschel, you guys. So what, we're looking at, um, Precious, right there?
No.
Precious, Kevin.
Kevin.
Jody.
Jody.
Okay. Read the motion.
Second.
Precious?
Yes.
Iceberg? Carlovich?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Alright, Chris, insurance.
Oh, it's me, okay, so, I mean, this is just follow-up about the, what we, you know, an idea that came up at, um, the budget meeting. I talked to Benicon today to get more information, um, obviously, we've been searching health insurance, just to kind of give an update on that. Um, Jolynn's been working with a company that, it's still not out of the water of what's gonna happen with them, potentially, they could present us an option for a different health insurance, but the stopgap coverage is what's gonna probably hold us up, but I talked with Jolynn today, and basically, they, they need to know that we have a deadline of the next meeting, um, that they would have to get us something before then. But where our other deadline is, is to make any plan changes, um, for twenty-twenty-one, we have a deadline of this Friday. One of the changes that's been brought up and is a, a common, um, a common thing now across health insurance for most employers, is having spouses that are currently on the plan but are being offered health insurance through their employer, be required to take that insurance, um, if it's being offered, and this wouldn't be for our member or for the children, it would solely be for the spouse, so there's two reasons, um, behind that. So when talking with Benicon, one reason is a large percentage of claims that happen on the policy are from the spouse of the insured rather than the insured themselves. Um, it's a higher percentage actually than the insured is the spouse, not sure how that data comes, but that's the data. The other one, obviously, is if there's no children on the policy and the spouse goes off, they, there's a savings, a large cost savings to the city of about twenty-five thousand dollars per employee that would go off. Um, we would have to, this would be a, across the entire city, um, recommendation, so whether there are children or not on there, uh, all spouses would be required to go on to their employer's insurance if offered. Basically, what would happen is Jolynn or Jody or a combination of both would likely meet with each employee to go over their file and see who's on the plan. Um, and basically, if they say, my spouse does not get health insurance, or my spouse does not work, or my spouse um, is of Medicare age, which was one thing that's not eligible to force require someone to go to, um, they would have to sign something basically saying they're not offered it elsewhere. If they are offered it elsewhere, they would have to, uh, basically get a price on what that would be. We have two options then on that point, if we require people to do this. We can, one, say, no matter what, you gotta go onto that plan, if your employer offers it, you. We can, one, say no matter what, you gotta go onto that plan, if your employer offers it, you can go on as a single, that's one option. The other option is to set a price point of a percentage above what they currently pay us for insurance on a monthly premium. So if, for instance, let's, I'm going to use a flat example, I don't know the exact numbers, if they paid us two hundred dollars and we said. If you are paying fifty percent more for your healthcare than you would with just us, we wouldn't make you go. So if they went to their company and it was more than a hundred dollars a month, we would let them stay on our plan. That way, families aren't getting uprooted with large cost of healthcare, but we're still seeing that going on. Um so that's, that's um, that's an option that we have. The other thing that's a large decision on our plan is we currently have in our plan documents that we allow um domestic partners on our plan. And the way that it's worded is that we allow a domestic partner of the opposite sex to be on the plan. Um which, from talking with Benicon, that's a, that's obviously outdated, it's an old way of doing things and there's not many, um, there's not many. Other municipalities or people that are on Benicon's plan that are doing the same thing, most of them have removed the domestic partner language altogether. And just went with spouse only, not including domestic partners. And that's a Joel question of when common law was removed, I know Rick had brought it up, but it's because that's not a, that's not a legally represented thing anymore. Um but they see most of them come off of that, so those, that's the overview of the decisions that we would have to make. Um the police union, um their contract says that we are, we have to offer health insurance to them and their dependents. From talking with Joel today, it's a broad range of what dependence means, so I think it would come down to an individual basis on each of them. Um whether the wife would be considered or, or um husband would be considered a um dependent or not, so we'd have to have that conversation. Um but for the rest of the non-uniform, it would be a blanket policy that all um spouses would have to move on to it if offered, again, only if offered. We would not be taking health insurance away from anyone. So I guess where I'm at, I think that this is a policy that has to go in place, it's something that you see across the country again with most. I think we need to remove the domestic partner language altogether, the only thing that I don't know, and I would open it up to see what you guys think. Is if any language should be added as far as a threshold of when we would allow spouse to stay on, independent of another price.
You mean the hundred, a hundred dollar?
Yeah, that was my example, was you can set a, you can set a percentage point of whatever it is. Um to basically say if it's going to add this much percent to your premium per month, you can stay on with us instead of having to go to the other one. You can make that a hundred percent, you can make that twenty percent, fifty percent, you can make it any number you want, it's your own policy, it's our own policy in there. Or you could leave it off entirely and they gotta go, that's that.
But if their spouse's policy is more expensive than what the city currently offers, could the city still pay the adjustment portion of it into the salary of the employee? Because that would still save um the.
It wouldn't in every case, Chris, because if, let's say, a spouse was forced to move on to another plan, but the children stayed with us. It potentially could save money if the spouse was going to have a lot of claims down the road, but the actual price of what the city pays for insurance for that person wouldn't change at all. Um because they still would be on a family plan, and in the plan that we're in, we only have two options, and that's the trouble with the plan we're in. It's either single or family, there's nothing in between. Um so if the spouse left and the children were still here, it's still the, whatever cost it is, uh per employee that they have on there. But it could potentially help us on claims wise down the road.
That's a good question.
Yep.
Uh you said there was some significant matters or?
Domestic partners.
Now, if we take that.
Say again?
He's asking about the domestic partners, Chris.
Yeah.
He wants to know if they'd be grandfathered in if we take that clause out, or would they no longer be covered?
January first, they would no longer be covered. Immediately.
Chris, question, so for what we're doing here now, so are we, Matt, we're going to vote on this, are we voting, this what we're going to do? Or are we voting to say we have other options and then come back to debate?
This is what we're gonna do.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yep, yeah, we have till Friday, because if we don't make a, a decision tonight on it, um we can't until twenty twenty two.
Okay. So technically, what you're saying, we vote on this Friday or whenever these people come in and meet with Jolene or Jody or whatever, they're going to tell them you don't ever have insurance of this.
No, that's not, that's not exact, that's not what ever going to happen at all, oh, you're talking about these, the domestic partners?
Yes.
Yes, you would have no, would no longer have insurance effective January first, unfortunately, but the assumption's one of two things. If, if it's a, if it's a non-working um domestic partner, there's an assumption of potential state insurance. Uh or that they could go through their employer, but again, it's, it's the, it's not something new.
How many domestic partners do we have?
We think two. Yep, we think two, we're not a hundred percent, but we think two.
I know, Chris, I wasn't even aware of the fact, so technically, you come to work for the city itself, right? And next week, find a girlfriend, put her on a policy.
Technically, I mean, Joel, that's a question for you, I don't know what it's, i- i- that, if you are financially dependent on someone, I think you can call them your domestic partner in that sense. My right, Joel?
The, the domestic partner question is really a policy question, Chris, it would be as defined in our specific policy. At one time, there were common law marriages, but they were called in husband and wife status, okay? Um and only husband status, because same-sex couples were not allowed to marry at that time. The language we're talking about, I think.
Well, that's the trouble with our wording right now is it is anyways.
Yes, I agree, so what I'm saying is there's no real def- definition of domestic partner to go by, except whatever's in our policy language.
And Jolene, what sort, do you know of, compared in our current policy language for domestic partner to add the moms and pals?
What do you mean, what are you asking?
Like, what's the criteria, is it with someone on living with for a week or is it a mom?
Ah, there's no, it's whatever we want.
Oh, we currently have no criteria to that.
Joel, one thing you might want to look into, and I don't know that, when the. Common law marriage was taken away, I don't know if anything prior to that was grandfathered or not.
They were, okay, but I would think it was ninety six, prior common law marriages were grandfathered, but I think we got rid of common law marriage in ninety six. I'm not positive, I was, that's what, that's the thing that sticks out in my mind, Rick, I haven't looked at it lately.
It was well after that when they stopped honoring them. When I was working, yeah, I know.
It could have, it could have been, and I may be all out of sorts, that was my guess, but I'll look at it tomorrow.
The other reason, the other reason I'm saying is.
Yeah.
Chris, do you know a number of people who may have to possibly switch to their insurance by their employer, do you have enough of that number or are we still after that app?
In my guess, it's going to be, I mean, from the six that I know that don't have any children on the policy, there's probably only. Three or four of those that might, and I don't know for sure, out of the rest of the employers, when you remove the police department, because you, you really have no idea what's going to happen in there. Um since most of them will probably be able to stay, uh unless it's obvious that the, the spouse is not a dependent, based off the, how it's worded in the contract. Um, uh you're, you're talking less than ten, uh maybe even less than five or six, but over the long term of it, you're going to see, one, as new employees come on. It's, it's the better, I mean, it's the, it's the better option for how your plan is set, and two, um, you're going to see some cost savings, whether it's immediate or long term, you're going to see cost saving.
If we, if we make this decision um for what you're looking at, Chris, we put on there stipulations, instead of it, these people losing their insurance January first, will you like six months or something?
We can't.
Chris, what are the uh costs now for the family managers for two thousand and twenty one?
What's the cost number for the family plan?
Yes.
To us, it's over forty one thousand dollars.
That was I am Del.
I don't, I just know that's the number that I was told, I don't know the exact how it break down, and then the individual's about seventeen and change, about a twenty four, like I said, it's about twenty four thousand dollar savings.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Chris.
Mm-hmm. So to me, this, it's two, it's two separate motions in my mind, um because one, I don't, I don't know how, and I don't know how anyone will feel on all of them. But where I'm at, an industry standard of domestic partner and especially Benicon having very few of their. Um they, she couldn't tell me the number exactly, but she was, you know, to say that it's very few that still have domestic partner language in there at all. Most of them have removed it entirely, especially again, with our domestic partner language being out of date. Um so it's two separate, my first one, I motion to remove the domestic partner language um from the, from our policy altogether. And you guys can go wherever you want on that.
My, my opinion is you keep it with, when we put terms on it, so you just can't say you have a girlfriend for a week now, she's mine. I say, but in my opinion, I think we should keep it because.
I don't think they're allowed to do that, you have your door.
Oh, is that how it is, Chris?
You, you gotta keep it or you don't, I mean, you can put, like you, like right now, it says um opposite sex, you could just remove that language. But again, this is not standard um to have it this way, to have that on there at all, uh in my, again, in my opinion.
Can we classify them as like if they've lived together for a minimum of years?
I don't know the answer to that.
Legally, yes, but it all get, depends on your insurance company and their definitions.
Yeah, and I don't.
Chris, just to maybe satisfy everybody, and again, as usual, I may be overstepping my bounds here, but I'm going to bring something up. What would be the, on the domestic partner issue, what if we, would we be able to through Benicon? Grandfather those who are currently on it, because I, my understanding is there's some pretty long-term, two, there's two people only and it's kind of a long-term deal. What if we grandfathered those two and put it on all new hires that it's, it's gone?
You, you could ask them, but I would highly doubt that, only because again, it's, an insurance company is pretty cut and dry. They're going to say it's all or none at that point then, um but again, you could ask it. Um to me, there's, there's, there's a couple of reasons for it too, so we obviously know where the budget's at. This is, if, if there are those two, and you can assume that, and the other thing too is, well, just because you do it, and I think someone said this earlier, just because it's in your policy, y- you can enforce it. At any time, really, if you enforce it this, you enforce it next year, you'd have to let Benicon know who to remove from the plan and who not to remove from the plan as well. But right now, we don't know how long those people have been together, we don't know, we, as, you know, from a government standard, they recognize spouse right now. So leaving them on, we're basically saying that taxpayers would still pay that twenty five thousand dollar bill when we don't know all of the issues. If we want to change the language, I'm okay with that, but to me, i- it's not, it's not standard, and as we have a, you know. A po- a employee workforce that will over time change and new people will come in, as, you know, employee workforces always do, you know, you always hire new people. You can leave that old language in and update it, or you can remove it altogether to get more modern, when we're already seeing significant rises. In our insurance premiums every year, and we know it's the reason why there's budget deficits or budget, um where we can't balance it every year because of health insurance.
So because of the importance of this topic and how it affects um members of our workforce and their families. What if we take this into consideration and host a special session only for this topic right after our interviews on Wednesday to make a decision?
Oh, so a special session later in the week?
Um yeah, for Wednesday after we're done with the interviews.
I would be okay with that, gives time people, gives people time to look into it, that makes sense to me, I can pull my motion back, if we're allowed to do that.
It's not, it could be an emergency, but it's not going to be an executive session.
No, no, it's a work session.
Well, it wouldn't be a work session, because you want.
No, it'd be emergency session.
It'd be the special session on an emergency basis, because we only have till Friday to decide.
Or, or we can do the meeting before the interviews.
Wait, your interview started.
That's.
I don't care the time is wrong.
Listen, you are off work Wednesday, extension day.
No, no, I still have work.
For you?
Yep.
The same, we could do it.
I'm off with, I'm off. I can meet anytime Wednesday.
Okay.
Will we walk the dog?
I, I can read, I probably won't hear till like three ten, but.
Yeah.
But we only, what, this is all we're going to do is find out, there's only two people we have to look at, right?
That's for domestic partnerships, so aside from the rest, I don't.
Well, I'm, I, I am, well, then we have to worry about the spouse.
Now, we're excluding the police, there's only one.
We're excluding the police, must we have to?
What's that?
Jolene mentioned about the police department, I don't know, you, you look at the contract, gradually have to.
It's a contractual issue, you might run into a problem with that.
I haven't looked at this issue.
And Chris is right, it does say in there for dependents, but I think prior contracts, it said family, you know, I think the dependence was put in there as a, a family, so it's. I don't know how it's going to affect that one officer.
It may, I mean, there's all kinds of legal bases for, again, domestic partner, as I was saying, um one of, but dependents are somewhat easier. Um if it's somebody that is claimed on a tax return, that would be evidence of dependency. If it's someone who does not, is not employed and the other partner is employed, that would be evidence of.
They sell separate tax returns, that's not.
It's not, not under the tax laws.
Right, right.
I also understand the value of looking at it on a case by case, but this is still a policy overall that we have to look at. Because it's, it's again, still on our books, so regardless of the outcome of those individual cases, it's still a. Because if, let's say, that one person can stay on because they're classified as a dependent, we still have the wording in there that says. Um a domestic partner of opposite sex only, so regardless, this has to be revisited. You know, however we, you know, look at it, um we still have to meet.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, we're on table three, ten on Wednesday, gives Joel some time to research. And it gives uh Jody and Jolene time to head down the list of employees and see who's.
The other thing just think about too is before Wednesday, this is on an individual basis for everyone, what you would want that percentage to be if you did go with the spousal one.
Can you say that again, Chris, I couldn't hear you.
I said, the other thing to think about for Wednesday, and this is on each person, what they believe, is if we discuss the spouses going on to their own healthcare. What, if you wanted to add a percentage in of the cost over what they're paying now, what that number would be, because that's completely. You, you, you know, that's, that number can be subject to whatever anyone votes, there's no, there's no set that you have to be at this or this or below this, it can be anything. So.
Chris, you had mentioned, I'm sorry, you had mentioned a fact that on the percentages, they're paying two hundred dollars with us.
Yep.
The new company would charge two hundred, it's not benefits for them to move, because you had said most of the time the spouse.
The new company would charge two hundred, it's not benefits for them to move, because you had said most of the time the spouses are the. Ones that have the most claims.
Yeah, I mean, there's still a benefit, obviously, long-term. Um, price-wise for the city, it's just a question of. You know, whether or not you'd wanna add that much of a bill to the families. And that would be the, the question.
Paying us two hundred, and they're paying another company two hundred, not to change. No, he's saying.
It would be four hundred total then.
Yeah, if, what he's saying is, if you say it can't, they don't have to change if it's gonna cost them fifty percent more. So if they're paying two hundred dollars now, and it's gonna cost them three hundred dollars at the next place, that's fifty percent more, so they don't have to change. If it's gonna cost them two hundred dollars at the next place, they don't have to change it.
That's our price plus their price, because if someone comes, if someone's on a, a family plan with us right now. And they're gonna drop down to a single plan because their spouse leaves. You're gonna take from, let's say, that two hundred, you're gonna cut it in half to one hundred of what our employees' out-of-pocket cost would be. So now, if you said, oh, it can't cost fifty percent more than what you were paying. It would have to be now that they were at two hundred, but that other individual plan for the other employee would have to cost two hundred to be at a total of three hundred. So that's probably confusing, as I say it out loud. But that's, that's what it'll be. So we're meeting Wednesday to go over more.
So Joel, so you'll, you'll, you'll um in-depth review the union's contract first for the health insurance. And Chris, for the meeting on Wednesday, you'll be able to have um some kind of documentation for council to see, like.
No. Ab- absolutely not. Absolutely not. I'm not, I will have no time to get documentation, I can tell you that right now. So I, I mean, basically, everything off of mine is off of what. Um, they told me and I went through today. But if you want actual, if you want the documentation of it, I would please ask someone else to do it, because I know I will have no time to do it between now and Wednesday.
My honest, the goodness of opinion is, I think you guys should all sit down and really go over your plan documents, because. Then if I just ask you today, who we have, who our insurance broker is. Which we don't have one, and they have someone listed as our insurance broker. So this hasn't been updated for a very long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
And then work on it next year to change what you know, because you don't have enough time to do it.
So include all of that with the Wednesday work session.
Yeah, but I don't think we're gonna get a council party.
Yeah, to, you, you have two days to make a large decision. To me, these were two of the smaller pieces. That were driving the premiums up, which is why I brought them up now. There were two smaller pieces that you could make a decision on. Based off the information that was given you, because it's cut and dry. Either you allow domestic partners, or you don't allow domestic partners, in my mind. And that's, and that, and it can be either way. But I don't think we're gonna be able to review the plan documents and completely uplift the plan in two days. That would be very tough to do.
Probably make the decision Wednesday at three ten, whatever.
Three ten, okay, got it.
Three ten, Joel. And Joel, I'm hoping you're good for three ten.
I'm hoping too. I don't, I don't bring my phone in with me, because it always goes off, so it's in my truck. I can't tell you I am, but I think I am.
All right. Multi-modal resolution.
This is a resolution to submit uh application for a PENDOT multimodal grant. This is for the Market Street, Streetscape, phases three, four, and five, that's Market Street from tenth to eleventh. And also from twelfth to thirteenth, though only on the south side of that section. And then also improvements to the intersection at tenth and Chestnut Street. Um this will result in um the streetscape sidewalks curving. Uh repair and reinforcement of the retaining walls on that section of Market Street from tenth to eleventh. Um, the requested amount is six hundred seventeen thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars. The city match. At thirty percent is two hundred and six thousand one hundred forty-one. The city will be contributing. The value of some light posts that were previously purchased at about seventy thousand dollars. And then there is the option to request a waiver of the match. And um we are submitting a letter to request that waiver to the uh Secretary of Department of Transportation. It's a resolution to submit that grant application.
I have a quick question. Where, where are we getting the city match fund out of?
Looks like around two thousand twenty.
We did not specify that in the application. Because of, uh, we did not get the okay ahead of time. But what we did was we put the seventy thousand light post and we're requesting a waiver. Now, if we don't get the waiver, then council will then have to consider where those funds will come from.
If we don't have it, we can decline it.
Chris. Are you declaring something like that if it's awarded to you? Better not go back.
I'm not gonna give it to you again. I agree with you. So the question would be, would we have it if we didn't get the approval of the waiver?
We're looking at a hundred and thirty round figures, thousand dollars.
Uh, and what, that come out of twenty twenty?
Well, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, it's not far down the road. I just didn't know, I didn't know if it's planned for twenty twenty, that's my question, so we can plan for it. You're wrong.
If the application goes in, the history review will be awarded next year, or this year shot anyhow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be awarded at the end of twenty-one, and you have three fiscal years to do it.
Okay.
Is this money eligible for block grant money? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, no, this is.
I don't know if you. I know, but for the match, for the, for the requesting.
But it depends what would be left from uh, remember uh Reagan Street, South Carolina Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So where would that money come from in the future? If you don't, if you don't get the waiver.
We had mentioned liquid fuels.
Josh, you good with that?
I mean, as Jim said, it wouldn't be down to twenty, what'd you say, twenty twenty, possibly. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, they have three years to complete the project and, correct?
Yes.
I mean, planning that far out, I wouldn't be okay with it, but also I want to put on the note that you can't keep drawing out, because you gotta fix your own city streets. So I mean, if it'd take a hundred and thirty-six thousand, I'm telling you, you gotta remember, we can't keep just pulling out liquid fuels and going to fix our own streets. That's a statement, correct me if I'm wrong, right? I know it's streetscaping, but it's not, it's not a city street. Going out towards Zimmerman. Like I said, that is, that is, that's not a city. Yeah. No, that's a state highway. The one side is. I'm just saying, I'm okay with it, but I said, you gotta, you gotta draw a point like after X amount of dollars, not going anymore out for X amount of years. We gotta focus on our own city streets. I'm just putting that out there.
So right now, we're just asking for waiver of the remaining, so I think a motion to accept the resolution.
Right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Brejas?
Yes. Yes.
My qualification?
Okay, so council, this is a follow-up on the work session that we held on the second of November. We reviewed the answers to the editorial legal analysis questions provided by the um general code. And then I also, we also reviewed the codification trackers. That was a spreadsheet showing all the minor changes regarding references, definitions, terminology, fees, penalties. And then you also saw the list of the new and revised ordinances. So at this point, I'm requesting council to approve, to authorize the supplement to codify the new and revised ordinances. And to approve the editorial legal analysis answers and spreadsheet to submit for final draft. And I know I spoke to um supervisor DPW today, who said that he will have the um. Streets and sidewalks ordinance revision ready for first readings at the end of this month. And we can, we can wait for that one to be completed before we do the final draft.
Okay.
So we get a motion to accept this?
Yes.
So make a motion to accept this.
Reese?
Yes.
Brejas?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Carl David?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Uh, I was down in the basement looking for something else. I found uh what are called Polk City directories. So Polk is the name of the company that um produces these city directories. They've been doing them for, I don't know, a hundred years. Um, and I found them in just a big plastic storage tub in the basement. Uh, these directories include a listing of all the businesses that are in the city. Um, all residents, names, addresses, streets, organizations, they're very comprehensive. These um directories are very valuable to genealogy and histor- historical researchers. I know this from having been involved with the North Emily County Historical Society. So I compared what we had to what the North Emily County Historical Society has in their collection. And those years that I have listed there, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy-one, seventy-six, seventy-nine, ninety-five, two thousand, two thousand two, two thousand four. Our, our directories that the Historical Society does not yet have in their collection. So this is a request and uh to give those. Directories from those years to the Historical Society, keep in their library for research.
If you ever read one, very interesting.
They are very interesting.
Especially the old ones, you say, I didn't know that.
So you wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Brejas?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Carl David?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
It's nice that they're gonna be able to utilize it since.
Yes.
Yeah, they were very excited to know that we had something they didn't have.
Jim, I heard you wrote it. You're involved.
All right, we're awake.
Okay, so the Salisbury Municipal Authority's Flood Department is planning to make some improvements to the tow drains along the flood wall. Basically, they want to install sixteen inlets at various locations along the wall to create access to the tow drain system. Um, the US Army Corps of Engineers requires acknowledgement by the. Sponsor, owner of the, of the flood control system, uh to note that there's no objection to the project.
Take that motion?
Second.
Aister?
Yes.
Carl David?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brejas?
Yes.
Uh, we already talked about this.
What we do in the discussion room? Um, now, I got two different days, two different times on my, um, for these interviews that are starting tomorrow. Starting with four o'clock, or we starting with five?
Four. Alex's computer didn't go back with the time zone, so when he set his hours.
Okay, I guess so, I got, alright. So they start at four o'clock each day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But now Wednesday, remember, we're doing three ten before the interview.
Yes. That's right.
Alright, there were no agenda items for discussion. Announcements. Uh redevelopment authority options coming up. Properties are sold as is and they are subjected to conditions of sale. There's a ten percent down payment required at the time of sale. The first, the one closest is November twenty-first. Five thirty-seven Reagan Street at nine AM, five thirty-nine Reagan Street at nine thirty AM, six thirty South Carolina Avenue at ten AM. Then there'll be another sale on December fifth. And that's three twenty-one Chestnut Street at nine AM, ten thirty-eight Chestnut Street at nine thirty AM, twelve forty-nine Marcus Street at ten AM. And four thirty-nine, we're North Second Street at ten thirty AM.
Can we make sure that we have that on the city's website and social media?
Yes.
Mike, is that twelve forty-nine, twelve forty-nine Marcus Street, is that the one at the corner of Hall and Down Room?
I believe it is.
Yes.
And then the ten thirty east, that would actually be East Chestnut.
Accepting letters of interest for a qualified city Salisbury health officer. Um, and just had you contact me for qualifications and additional information on the positions.
I thought we were having a code enforcement officer.
So code enforcement officer is doing the retail food facility inspections. They are not a health officer, they are not qualified to be a health officer. And the city is required to appoint a health officer.
And the board was.
There is a board of health and the council is the board of health for the city. Um, okay, the Hart and Heritage uh next meeting is Thursday, November nineteenth, five PM, here at City Hall. Next council meeting, November twenty-third. Council city officials and presenters impressed at here at City Hall, public attendance by Zoom and Facebook Live.
Oh, and save the special session.
Ah, special session will be Wednesday, November eleventh at three ten PM. Is there any public comment?
Anything, Alex? Zoom, is there any public comments on Zoom, Facebook?
You had one submitted though, I'm just sorry. Um, Mr. Frank Boyack submitted uh and wanted this to be pre- presented as a public comment. He has concerns regarding Schroyer Avenue, that's the alley that's kind of behind the North Street.
Yeah, runs along the bowling.
Behind, yeah, between the bowling alley and Juju's.
Oh, okay. The racing, the bowling.
Perhaps. So, he's saying there's people going through there at very high rate of speed. Worst problem is around four and five PM. Um, he's concerned about the children playing back there in that alley. He and his spouse have had close calls. He would like to see speedball play, other than that, because of the snow removal, but that was his, his request. But he does want the situation addressed.
Chief?
Sure.
Garden hose, across the street, always works.